We've got a beautiful day outside. We've got the heater working inside. Life is good. The Board of Supervisors, the County of Del Norte, and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. So Kylie, would you please call roll?
Supervisor Howard? Supervisor Starkey?
Here.
Supervisor Short?
Here.
Supervisor Mastin?
Here.
Chair Hemmingson?
I'm here. Now if we all please take a moment of reflection. Thank you. Now if you'll all stand Supervisor Short will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction of new employees.
It's chair and board. We have the human resources risk manager here today to introduce two of our new HR decks.
Right on. Welcome, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
We're here this morning to introduce our two, as Neil said, the two human resources technicians. We have Paris Scott and Catherine Rodri is joining us.
Welcome. Anything to say to us? No? Thanks. Glad to have you. Anyone else?
That's it, Chair.
Thanks. County Council, anything to report from closed session?
Not today, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I would request any deletions or corrections to the agenda from board members. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any such items?
I'd like to poll some items, is this the time?
No.
Okay.
You can do that if you want to poll things on the consent. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Now we will go into brief reports, announcements relative to county programs and projects by supervisors. We'll start with Supervisor Mastin.
Okay, so since the last report, I did take a visit to Mission Possible, entered the Women's Transitional Housing Unit, and I met with the probation department. I met with the district attorney. I did attend a broadband session with connectivity with the state. I attended the missing and murdered women event. I held three town hall meetings, one at Margaret Keating Elementary in Clamath and one at Crescent Elk Middle School here in Crescent City and one virtual. And I will be sharing some of the results of those town hall meetings and posting them on my Facebook page for people to add comments to if they weren't able to attend the town hall meetings, but also to see the results of those meetings and where people place their importance of the issues. Met with the Correctional Officers Association Union. And with the Del Norte, I read to third, fourth, and fifth graders at Best Maxwell under the Del Norte leaders love to read. And then I attended a meeting with the Food Hub OES and building work group meeting, so. Just that was brief. I didn't give you details of any of those.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Supervisor Starkey?
Thank you. Yes, I attended several of the first five strategic planning sessions where we are identifying the goals in which we want to accomplish in the next five years. I'm continuing to work on encampment solutions, something that will work for our community on both sides. I attended the local behavioral health board meeting where we got a real good overview of the mental health diversion and how that could really help us identify those individuals who would not have normally committed a crime had they gotten the mental health services that they need. We are having open for two consumer vacancies on the board. So a recruitment flyer is out. And to be qualified for that, you must be a citizen of Del Norte and you must be someone who is currently receiving or has received behavioral health services. Because we want their input into what we're doing here in the community and if it's helpful or not. You can contact me for if you want information on that. I've continued on the ad hoc committee for work on the Del Norte ambulances, request for an exclusive operating agreement. We're in the report writing stage of that, so hopefully we'll be able to get that out soon. I attended many of the candidate forums. I'm grateful for those individuals who are stepping up to do something. You know, it takes some courage and a lot of vulnerability to put yourself out there. And so it doesn't go unnoticed for those of you who are doing that. I read at the after school program for Best Maxwell as part of the Leaders Who Read program. So I read to about forty youngsters and interacted with them about what a role of a supervisor is. And I'll tell you, the best part of that whole experience was the hugs I got at the end. Really kind of made my day. Continuing to work on the Fourth of July Planning Committee, the theme for this year is small towns, big hearts. I'm pretty happy with that. We selected our grand marshals and they will be Nick and Lisa Rail, which is well deserving to be the grand marshals. If you have nominations for people you want to have a hometown hero, those are due on May twenty seventh. And directly to me, and that's one of the sections that I like to make sure we follow through with. I attended a meeting with the Tri-County Independent Living, just kind of get some information about what they offer, what services they offer to the community and how we can maybe collaborate with them to make sure that the individuals in this community are getting the assistance that they need. I met with Dave Dornas of the JCC, which is the Juvenile Justice Commission, about some concerns he has regarding juvenile hall and juvenile probation. Always, my door is always open. We're welcome to meet with people if you have any concerns. I attended a law library meeting. I am still continuing to look for solutions for some of the animal services. There's got some issues out there. We know it's not going to be remedied overnight. There's a lot of work to do. So just kind of trying to keep coming up with solutions for that. And finally, I prepared a pre-recorded interview for a women's group meeting that's happening on this Saturday, but I'm already volunteering for something else, so I'm not able to attend that interview. So I recorded interview, which I'm sure I'll win a Grammy for Emmy, whatever it is. And that is my results.
Thank you. Supervisor Short?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also listened in on the behavioral health board meeting and wanted to give my compliment to Supervisor Starkey on her, you know, clarifying and following up with the board. Our board's decision to make our county jail treatment facility, and you know, it's a first step in getting people the treatment in, that they need in the most ethical and empathetic way possible. You know, her engagement there is the key part to finding the solutions in that arena. Attended a couple of forums myself for District Three and District Four there. They're at the Methodist Church. Attended a tri-agency meeting. Attended Supervisor Howard's virtual town hall. Did a gender review for a solid waste meeting this afternoon and listening on city council meeting. Worked with Supervisor Starkey on the Del Norte ambulance project. Attended the local transportation commission meeting and was with Supervisor Starkey when we met with Dave Dornas from the Juvenile Justice Commission. So that is it for me.
Thank you Supervisor Howard.
Thank you. Yeah, tons of candidate forums and it's great to be out in front of the peeps. It does get us into a little bit more of a grounded state almost immediately as we listen and knock door to door or hear questions that come to us during these forums. There's a lot going on out there and I think a lot of us see it reflected mostly in crime statistics that we're seeing coming in through the Sheriff's Department through dispatch. There's no doubt that our community is facing an increase in crimes that are visible and how we react to them, both as the Sheriff's Department, as probation, as a DA's office, and as the Board of Supervisors that helps fund and source funds to make sure these places stay healthy and competent. And we have officers to respond and timely matters extremely critical. And I know this board is very active in helping to pursue and ensure that stays in place. So people here in Del Norte County stay safe, but that is an extreme concern as we're out there on the campaign trail today to ensure the safety of our community. I just want to emphasize that. Had discussion with Elk Valley Rancheria and their tribal council on potentially partnering on some mental health, behavioral health needs and backfilling some areas of concern that are currently lacking here. Definitely welcome their help and leveraging potentially some dollars out there, both state and federal, in ensuring that we can take care of mental health and behavioral health issues in our community, both inpatient and outpatient. So looking forward to that continued conversation. As Supervisor Short mentioned, attended a tri-agency meeting. We continue to discuss wind power and then also how we're going to get tri-agency potentially revived with some dollars that would be coming from our member agencies, both the city, the county, and the harbor. Taking quite a few calls around code enforcement, like concerns, as most folks are aware. Through Measure R, we just hired an additional code enforcement officer here this year. That person's getting up to speed obviously very quickly with the backlog that we currently have, plus the caseload that's been added. Those blight calls continue to come in, but we're actively addressing them and really proud of Don McMillan and his folks for continuing to address these issues that we're here concerned with in their county. Tackling some issues in the area around English Lane, which is at the south of my district. Also sat down with True North on some issues that they were concerned with on the Promise Neighborhoods grant. Attended a local transportation commission meeting as Supervisor Short mentioned. Definitely looking at moving forward and putting additional pressure on Caltrans as it relates to Highway one ninety-nine, Highway one oh one, and those intersections at Elk Valley Crossroad. Had a meeting with that Supervisor Hemmingson also attended with the Smith River Community Services District here and trying to find some solutions to some infrastructure problems that we had with the Rowdy Creek Bridge. And then also attended Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting where we discussed security issues at the parking lot at the airport. And lastly, as Supervisor Starkey mentioned, it was fun, extremely fun. The most important piece of the last two weeks, in my opinion, was the Del Norte Leaders Read to Kids program. This has been a favorite thing of mine and I read to a group of kids out at Redwood and looking to do another one this week with a group of kids at Best Maxwell. But as many of you are aware, we, this board in particular, and many of us have championed the three read twenty-three program, which is a community collaborative partnership that allowed us to focus in on those critical times in a child's life to where they can all read by grade three. And stop what had been termed for a long time here in the state of California is the school to prison pipeline. So the skills that are critical at a third grade level really advance on reading. And if you cannot read, you're not going to pick up a lot of those skills because most of your classes are literally based around reading, math, science, et cetera. So it's critical that we continue to energize these conversations around reading because in my opinion, the best thing that this board can do is continue to move our energies upstream to those younger children and give them hope for the future. And that's my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you Supervisor Howard. Well, I spent some time in Sacramento, had an RCRC meeting, which is representing California rural counties where we discussed county issues, much of which we're already talked about here, mental health crisis, whether that's within the homeless or within the jail system. We also talked about fire, broadband, a myriad of things. Counties that are rural like ours have a lot of similar issues and we get a chance to try to come to solution on some of those things and we're working hard to do that. Then I had a Nortech meeting, which is the Northern Rural Training Employment, Northern Rural Training and Employment Consortium in Anderson. Those are always good meetings, have to do with workforce development and that type of thing. Had an interview, got interviewed, was asked to be part of a interview by True North. Since I am leaving this post at the end of the year, they wanted to get some information from me on what I thought was good and what I thought wasn't so good. And in my opinion, it's all good, even though some of it's not so good. As Supervisor Howard and Supervisor Short said, we had a local transportation commission meeting. I did a gender review, was involved in the Dungeon and Scrab Task Force Executive Meeting, where we usually talk about things that we want to have for the full Dungeon and Scrab Task Force. Set the agenda there. As Supervisor Howard said, we had a meeting about Rowdy Creek Bridge with the Smith River Community Services District. I also went online to be, to listen in on the Governor's Wildfire and Forest Resilience Task Force. Was moderated by Secretary Wade Crowfoot, which he's always good to listen to. I really enjoy him. Supervisor James Gore from Sonoma County, Stacy Corliss from Mono County, Patrick Wright. This was all put on, put together by the NCRP, which is North Coast Resource Partnership, and their strategic plans going forward about with fire, wildfire, and forest fire resilience. Very interesting meeting. Look forward to seeing more of that. And as Supervisor Howard said, we had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. I did listen in on some of the candidate forums, all very interesting and really appreciate the amount of people that are stepping up. Not just, not just coming and complaining and whining and crying, but actually stepping up and trying to make a difference. So really, really appreciate those people that are stepping up. And with that, I think we'll move on to the consent agenda and Supervisor Mastin. You said you wanted to pull some things for discussion?
Yes, I do. I would like to call item one, twelve, fourteen, and fifteen.
Okay, can I get a motion on the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment on the consent agenda minus item one, twelve, fourteen, and fifteen?
Good morning, Chairman, Board of Supervisors, County Clerk. I respectfully request consent items number two be pulled for discussion. And I'd like to comment on number twelve if possible, please. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any interest in board members from pulling other items from the consent agenda?
Yeah, I would support number two because I had a question on it also.
Okay. So.
I'll amend my motion to exclude number two.
All right.
And I'd second that amendment.
Chair, I've had a hand raised since we've started. Can I clarify on what they want to discuss? Or do you want me to hold off till?
Yeah, let's find out whether they want public comment or they're commenting on the consent agenda.
Ashley, you are on. You are muted.
I apologize. I did not mean to hit the hand raise button. Sorry about that.
Thank you. And I have another hand raised, Chair.
Okay.
It says M Larson. You are on.
Yes, I wanted to address the board today on behalf of Little League.
Okay, well, we're going to hold off on that till general public comment, okay? Okay, thank you.
Is there any other public comment on consent items three through three through eleven, then thirteen and sixteen? We're pulling items number twelve, fourteen, fifteen, one and two. Any further public comment? Seeing then Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, let's take item number one.
Yes, I just have one correction on page seven under action nineteen. And I would like for you to add potential, I recuse myself due to a potential conflict of interest. And that was it.
Okay. Any public comment? On consent agenda item number one? And I'm looking for a motion with those corrections?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Item number two?
Number two, my question just was in regards to what are we actually doing? We're passing the resolution, but I wonder if there were other, other things that we were doing in recognition of it being Mental Health Month.
That's what we're doing is passing the resolution. Yes.
So we're not doing anything else but that?
That's correct.
If I could, today, that's all we're doing is the proclamation. However, behavioral health has been doing a campaign to make sure that this is getting out there to reduce the stigma of mental health
Yes.
and the treatment. So they are absolutely doing a lot of things to get that information out, but on today's board agenda is just the proclamation.
Yes.
This proclamation is to support them in doing their process. They're the ones that ask to have the proclamation read. It's to support them. Public comment? Thank you again. Chairman, Board, County Clerk. It's disheartening that this board's funding of mental illness is resulting in another crisis. If you were honest with your constituents, the proclamation would read. I can't get that on. Proclamation of Government-Induced Mental Illness Awareness Month, May twenty twenty-two. Whereas the Behavioral Health Branch, in collaboration with Del Norte County Board of Supervisors, have imposed unlawful mandates on its citizens and created an unprecedented increase in depression, mental illness, child abuse, substance abuse, domestic violence, homeless, and crime. Whereas the Board of Supervisors enables poor life decisions and promotes the labeling of mental illness to expand the social service network. And whereas the county is creating stereotypes and mental stigmas to diagnose citizens as mentally ill to expand the welfare state and continue expanding government overreach with more positions allocated to the Department of Health and Human Services. Whereas the failed health policies of Del Norte County promote medicating more citizens instead of promoting health and wellness. And whereas this Board of Supervisors assumes more responsibility over a citizen's health and further transitions government into a medical provider instead of a democratic facilitator. And whereas we commend the Department of Health and Human Services for wasting more tax dollars, creating more of social dependence and ensuring they can create more positions by making the problem systematic. Whereas we see an increase in homeless and mentally ill people being implanted into Del Norte County as a result of promoting free housing, free food, and free diagnosis of the mentally ill. And whereas citizens who endure tough times will be labeled mentally ill instead of being given employment opportunities. And whereas the Behavioral Health Branch recognizes that increased staffing and increased funding will be needed to combat this ever-growing crisis. And whereas the Board of Supervisors would prefer to cast judgment and stereotype a person's life difficulties as a reason to drug civilians rather than deal with life. Whereas the county would prefer to hire another caseworker rather than another law officer. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Supervisors and the County of Del Norte that May twenty twenty-two, hereby proclaimed Government-Induced Mental Illness Awareness Month and calls upon its citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to recommit more tax dollars to attract more homeless, create more social services, and further enable the government to diagnose psychosis upon its citizens in the pursuit of an ever-expanding government. Thank you. Any further public comment? This is on the consent agenda, item number two. Yeah.
A motion to approve consent agenda, item number two.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes, item number twelve.
Chair, would you do, are we going to read this out loud or want to do that?
Chair, I just want to clarify that. I didn't, I forgot to do the presented proclamation. I will give that to them after the meeting and that is my bad. I apologize for that.
That is an oversight. It's not a problem. And, but I do believe that we have people here from behavioral health, so I would like to present or at least read it out loud and acknowledge them.
Okay.
And then we can get that, the actual proclamation to you at another time, if you don't mind. Is that okay, Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Please read it.
So I'll just start reading it. It is, this is the actual proclamation of the Mental Health Awareness Month, May twenty twenty-two. Whereas optimal mental health care is essential to the overall health of Del Norte County, resulting in productive activities, fulfilling relationships, and the ability to adapt to changes and cope with adversity. Sorry, big word, especially during these unprecedented times of COVID nineteen. And whereas an estimated twenty-one percent of US adults experienced mental illness in twenty twenty, according to the National Alliance on Mental Illness. And our local behavioral health board and partnering agencies emphasized the importance of promoting mental health and the early identification of mental illness. Last year, Del Norte County Department of Health and Human Services Behavioral Health Branch served over twelve hundred and fifty unique clients. Whereas in twenty nineteen, just prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic, nineteen point eight six percent of adults experienced a mental illness equivalent to fifty million Americans. Whereas suicidal ideation comes to, continues to increase among adults in the US. Four point five eight of adults report having serious thoughts of suicide, an increase of six hundred and sixty-four thousand people from the prior year. Whereas mental health problems do not discriminate. They affect people regardless of race, creed, age, lifestyle, or economic status. And mental health recovery is possible with proper treatment and support empowering mental health consumers to lead a full and productive life. Whereas as many as twenty-seven million Americans who have mental illnesses do not receive treatment. And people who have untreated mental health issues use more general health services than those who receive mental health services when they need them. Whereas mental illness should not be shrouded in stigma and discrimination, causing those who are affected not to seek care. And the County of Del Norte observes Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health. To increase access to mental health services by to increase access to mental health services by shining light on it and offering hope to those in need. Whereas, we commend the Department of Health and Human Services, the Behavioral Health Branch, and all the community partners, organizations, whether private, faith-based, or governmental, and individuals for their outstanding work improving the quality of life for mentally disabled individuals in our community. Whereas, Behavioral Health Branch recognizes additional challenges are met when dealing with mental illness during the pandemic such as COVID-19. As essential workers, we are responding to the community needs, providing services to those affected. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors in the County of Del Norte that May 2022 is hereby proclaimed as Mental Health Awareness Month throughout Del Norte County and calls upon its citizens, its government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for the people with mental illness. We do thank you for all the work that you do for us.
Name is Shane. When I was nineteen, I had a traumatic brain injury. And at twenty-one, I was diagnosed with schizoaffective disorder, bipolar, depression, anxiety, panic attacks, and PTSD. In my experience, the sooner you talk about what's going on, the sooner you'll be able to learn, understand, and cope with your mental illness. Behavioral health has helped me by learning about my symptoms and how to use coping skills. This allows me to live and function in a great way day to day. Behavioral Health Service Center has helped me by meeting new people and making new friends. This environment allows us to help each other by building good support systems and lets us know others go through the same things.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gloria Boebert with Del Norte County Behavioral Health, and I would like to convey this from our clients and from the staff of Behavioral Health. A client said this about her mental illness. Mental health in itself is a very sorrowful subject. I believe many people deal with mental health issues which go unnoticed. I hope that those who suffer can all one day be able to succeed in their lives. The mental health staff strive to provide services that will help those with mental illness, to lead a healthy and productive life free from symptoms of their mental illness. Our focus is to teach them that they have the rights and can stabilize each other through groups and shared services in addition to medication support. I thank you and the board members for acknowledging and supporting the difficulties that mental health, that the mentally ill, excuse me, face each day by awarding us this proclamation of mental health to us on this day. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you for your story.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to the ten-twenty-five timed item, which is a public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Limit your comments to three minutes. Is there any public comment?
Good morning, let me set it. On January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, in the LA Times, there was a story written about the FBI investigating the LA County Jail. An FBI informant set off a federal investigation that led to convictions of nearly two thousand sheriff officers. So what do you think I did? I called the FBI yesterday and filed a complaint against our sheriff's office complaining about our county jail. They took my information and asked questions. Whether the investigation ensues is beyond me, but I for one am tired of a complete dysfunctional sheriff's office. I hope heads roll and criminal charges are a result. I told you this wasn't the end of this story. Mr. Howard told his constituents at a debate last week, the cell conditions was caused within ten hours. Do you know how many people are laughing at you for that? And you said this straight face in the house of worship. This counting the seriousness of this mental ill matter in a county jail is outrageous. Mr. Schneck was quoted by the triple kit that Mr. Gomez was allowed out of his cell for two hours a day. In essence, the officers did nothing when they took him out of the cell to sanitize his cell and let him sit in his squalor. Now, on another matter, sexual assault requires numerous hours of specialized training. Sending an officer out on these cases that has a few hours of training and one year as a deputy is ridiculous. Women who are sexually assaulted are not similar to a theft at Walmart, but that's how it's being treated. Ms. Deputy Sloan takes no evidence and is literally torn up by the defense attorney in a court of law due to her lack of experience as an officer in sexual assault cases. So what do you think happens to the perp? Yeah, that's right. That's it. I'm done.
Thank you. More public comment, please?
I'm Marissa Larson. I'm the secretary for Del Norte Little League this year. This is Ryan. He's our chief, chief groundskeeper. I'm going to read the letter that I emailed to each of you guys last night. We're here on behalf of our local Del Norte Little League Board. We rent the county pikes baseball fields for our league every year. Our board is comprised of community volunteers who stepped up to make twenty-twenty-two's baseball and softball season happen after a two-year break due to COVID. We are a five-oh-one C-three nonprofit with very limited monetary resources. Del Norte Little League has over five-hundred-and-seventy kids enrolled this season. We are still recovering from loss of revenue due to COVID and closed seasons. The condition of the fields has been an ongoing problem for years. There are significant issues with the lack of dirt and drainage on the fields, especially fields two and three. When we rented the fields, it was questionable if the fields were even safe enough to play on due to their condition. Weeks before our season opened, we spent a majority of our money and time on equipment, quads, tractors, et cetera, to get the fields in a playable condition. Even with all of this effort, due to the lack of drainage and dirt, the fields still remain unplayable for days at a time long after the rain. Our volunteers have to pump the water off of the fields with a shop vac or sump pump in order to get them to a playable state. We've had to cancel over eighty games this season due to weather and field conditions. At least half could have been avoided if the fields drained properly. Parents and volunteers are frustrated and just want the kids to be able to play baseball. If proper drainage and dirt was available, the kids would be able to play sooner after rain and miss less playtime. Little League is willing to fundraise, solicit donations, and put in the work to help aid in getting the field to a safe and maintainable condition. We're seeking help from the county to facilitate a partnership with Del Norte Little League that will benefit generations to come. Please consider allocating some funds to this community project and help our youth. I also emailed these pictures which show the conditions of the fields after it rains. It hasn't rained since yesterday morning. And we had people out pumping fields all day yesterday and started at ten o'clock this morning in hopes that we would be able to play by five o'clock today.
I actually started out there at eight o'clock this morning, heavy dragging the fields. Get them to dry. I do it every week. And it's really, it's kind of tiring, really. And it's not just me, there's a couple other people who have been there like every single time. And it's, you know, we, Brookings Fields are playable the next day. You know, it's, it's, it wouldn't be hard to get it done. We really need to bring the grade of the fields up and do something about the drainage on the outside because it's over the years that silt has washed into the existing drainage and completely clogged it up. So I mean, I have equipment, my other, the other guys that, you know, help me, they have equipment. We can, we have sources to do it, but we, the funds and time is very limited. So, you know, if we could dress these fields up and make it, make them playable the day after a rain, it's, it's doable. It's not going to take a lot.
And the playtime is important because in order for the kids to participate in All-Star Games, they have to play a specific number of games, which is hard when half our season is rained out. Specifically, our senior girls softball team will be going straight to regional tournament this year in Missoula, Montana, if we can get them enough games.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Kylie, you had somebody online?
Sure, I do not.
You do not?
What's that?
You don't have anybody now?
No.
Oh, okay. Oh, that was the person that didn't mean to raise her hand. Any other public comment? Yeah, if it's an agendized item, we'd rather wait. That's correct. You bet. So no more public comment? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment period and we're gonna move on. We're gonna move on to our ten-thirty timed item. Please come up and comment.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know where to begin hardly. Just disappointed. I'm here just as a concerned parent, concerned citizen. Kind of frustrated, you know, with what I see. Last week, you said you hadn't threatened to arrest me. Do you think that's true, Chairman?
Comment period.
Just for you to say that, I mean, it has a county letterhead on it. It says violations to wear a mask will be punishable by imprisonment. I mean, so that's fine if you don't think that that's a threaten, a threat to imprison me. I mean, so I just wanted to clear that up and just don't lie to my face. I mean, I called you in November and I told you the scenario where we were walking through a store and my son asked if he was gonna be arrested for not wearing a mask. And you told me, well, they're not gonna arrest your son, they're gonna arrest you. It's like, wow, that's terrible. But really, I'm here to talk about number twenty-four DHHS. I'd like to get COVID on the next agenda, please. You know, it was on the agenda every day for years. Now, if we could please get COVID on, just to have an analysis of what's going on. FDA just came out that vaccines cause, or the Johnson and Johnson vaccine causes blood clotting. Yet our county website with the county letterhead is still promoting vaccines. And there needs to be a disclaimer there. On your agenda, you recommend N-ninety-fives. N-ninety-five by Kaloosha standards should be fit-tested. You shouldn't be recommending just in a general statement without some education. I mean, you have a hundred, two-hundred DHHS employees. Over the last ten years, the county has increased staffing by fifty-one people. Over those ten, ten years, DHHS has increased by forty-nine. That means DHHS has increased by thirty-three percent. All other county departments have increased by less than one. You have a decision here to make. You can allocate those funds responsibly to the jails and to the sheriff's department. Help our law enforcement. Our cops don't deal with mental illness? They don't deal with homeless? Why can't we use those funds to help improve our jail? I'm taking time and I just like to have my comments be heard.
Thank you. And just to be clear, I never said that anyone was going to arrest Brandon Bieber, ever. Never said that his son was going to be arrested. Your time's up, please sit down. We're gonna move on now. We have a, is that the last public comment?
Yes.
You said, I'm not gonna argue with you. Would you please sit down? Alls I want to do is say, when we had the phone call, I never said you were going to be arrested. We're gonna move on to our ten-thirty timed item. Is that on Zoom, Kylie?
Yeah, they're participating via Zoom.
Kristi, are you there somewhere?
I am, yes.
Right on. And Tony?
Yes, sir.
Right on.
All right, I'm gonna try to share my screen for our presentation. One moment. Okay. We're there.
What is that little box we got roaming around on our screens here that says input? Input not supported?
Oh.
It's not there, but it is here.
I'm not seeing anything on my screen.
What's on all of these screens up here? It's been on there ever since we started this morning.
Is the picture showing up at all?
Yeah, we can see, it just distracted.
Just got this roaming box going around saying input not supported. Are we good to go?
Yeah.
Kristi?
Wait, yes, we are.
Oh.
Okay.
I was just, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
All right, I was just making sure everything was working on your end over there. Perfect. Well, thank you for having us. My name is Kristi Hernandez. I am the program supervisor at the Smart Workforce Center here in Crescent City. And my partner in crime, I will let him introduce himself.
Hi, my name's Tony Fabrikas. I'm the principal of Sunset High School. And I thank you guys so much for allowing us to be here and present our little program to you guys as both a, an informational item and a sales pitch of sorts.
Yes, so we were invited. Thank you Supervisor Starkey for setting this up for us to come and speak. It's been a few years since we've been here to talk about our summer youth internship program called E-three. And we will jump right into it.
Okay, well, again, thank you guys. And what E-three is, on the first slide you saw, it stands for three Es: experience, education, and employment. And it really started a few years back when, at one of the economic summits we used to have, like, I don't know if we had one this year, but we used to have them every year. And our superintendent, Mr. Harris, was asked about, or maybe it was more of a statement or a comment, on the products of Del Norte County Schools. And he was, so hey, they can't even, I'm hiring them and they can't even count back change. And we're not, they need to learn soft skills and all this, you know, a lot of good feedback in this economic summit. So he approached me and recruited me to say, hey, Tony, I got this feedback at the economic summit. Could you look into starting something that could help this? And what it ultimately turned into was E-three and something that both Kristi Hernandez and myself invented, so to speak, with, with the help of, at the time, building healthy communities. So it was a, what we call a four-legged stool, so to speak, a partnership of Del Norte County Schools, the Workforce Center, at the time BHC, and local employers and agencies. I say agencies because city of Crescent City and county of Del Norte has also participated. And what it is, it provides opportunities for our kids locally in the form of a four-to-six-week placement, a paid internship. And we found early on that there was such a need for this. Del Norte County, and this is no, this is, this is common, that knowledge that we, we have a lot of the stats that you don't want to have as stats, but are good for helping you write grants such as poverty rates, neglect, domestic violence, substance abuse. All those things are great for getting grants. They are more problematic when kids are raised and surviving through these predicaments in our community. So we start seeing these kids and what we discovered is these kids don't necessarily have the modeling or the examples or the coaching, so to speak, at home or in their neighborhoods for employment. There is a mystery where myself or Kristi or maybe some others in the chamber there would take their kid or my kid around to all the local businesses and shops and say, hey, go get a application. Bring it in, let's fill it out, be dressed right, go back in, check on it. How, you know, keep checking on it, what, you know, ask for to meet the manager. Bring it in, let's fill it out, be dressed right, go back in, check on it. How, you know, keep checking on it. What, you know, ask for to meet the manager. Shake their hands, look them in the eye. All these things that we coach our kids isn't necessarily, uh, shared amongst many of our students and young people in Del Norte County. And so we discovered that we're kind of becoming a surrogate, so to speak, for this. And, um, you know, it reminded me this year of the Winter Olympics. I'm a child of the seventies and eighties where a nineteen eighty miracle on ice, the, the hockey, um, gold medal of the United States Hockey Team. If you remember, many of you, you in the chamber are my age or maybe a little older, so you remember. And we were huge underdogs and their, their coach, Herb Brooks, is talking to them before the, the game against the Soviet Union. Remember the, the evil empire, that the Soviets are gonna beat our, our little eighteen and nineteen-year-old college kids. And everybody thinks it, even the players thought it in their locker room before the game. Coach Herb Brooks is saying, hey, nine times out of ten times, we play these guys and we're gonna lose. We're gonna get our butts kicked. Of course, all the players in the room are wondering, man, this is not going very well as a pep talk. And he said, he brings it around, says, but not tonight, not this night. And he says, through great moments are born great opportunities. And I remember that and I attach it to this because that's all our kids in Del Norte County need is an opportunity. And we've seen that through the development of this E three program is once we remove that mystery, the curtain, pull it back of being or, or looking for a job and the idea of being employable. They shine in so many ways. And I work with many kids here at Sunset that this has helped or in, at Del Norte High School. And we serve all the schools, but it is, you know, what we built wasn't there before. And we saw that actually it was a, it filled a great need, not only in our county, but after our first year of this E three program, Christie at the Workforce Center was invited to speak and present at a statewide Workforce Center Conference that, um, a lot, about ten or eleven counties wanted to adopt this because it solved a lot of their issues and it, and it helped. They didn't know, hey, what, what is this all about? Why, you know, tell us about it so we can start something at our end. And it starts with a week-long boot camp the week school gets out. And we, it's about five, six hours a day for the five days and we coach up our kids that are involved with, uh, soft skills. Again, what it means to be employable, employability. And we invite all of our, uh, participating businesses and they help join us. And we have panels of employers and panels of professionals and they get to have FaceTime with our kids and, uh, answer a lot of questions. At the end of that boot camp week, we have, we developed like a speed date, I'm using air quotes here and I know that's a bit sketchy, um, speed dating, uh, with our employer. So we have, shoot, about thirty desks, about ten feet apart and an employer at each desk. And our kids spend about five to seven minutes selling themselves on it, uh, interview with that person. And I blow the air horn and they switch and they go to the next seat and the next employer and they, by the end of the day and by the end of the week, they have picked their top three choices and our employers have picked their top three, uh, choices and we try and meet them up. Again, like speed dating, but to find an opportunity for a kid as a placement in their, in their business or again, whether it's county of Del Norte, the city of Crescent City. And it can be up to a four or a six-week placement. So again, yeah, this is a, a love connection, so, so to speak, of the speed dating. If I'm continuing that analogy, but there's an end date, there's an expiration date, um, of four to six weeks. So if it's not working, great, they got, they got to learn some, some stuff, but then we move on. And again, students can earn up to ten elective credits. So it is a true partnership through nonprofits, through the Workforce Center, Del Norte County Schools and our local employers.
And I just wanna clarify, we don't actually do speed dating and speed interviewing that. So I just, just wanna put that out there. Um, so, uh, this is a list of our E three work sites that we've had since we started in two thousand seventeen. We were only able to do three summers. We, we weren't able to do twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, but we are hoping to come back this year bigger and better. Um, the highlighted ones are the, the work sites that said they are participating again this, this summer. And then new for twenty twenty-two, after some of our outreach to Rotary, Chamber, some other places, we are able to also bring on this list of new work sites, which we're excited about. We like to have a, a good range of different work sites for our young people to choose from, from office settings to labor to hospitality. Um, so we try to, try to, and we're, we are always trying to get more trades involved too. It's a tricky one because, um, because of some of the regulations and having to be eighteen and older for, for working some equipment. But, um, that's always one of our, one of our things that we try to, to do. We are already up to about between thirty-five and forty possible placements for the summer, which is great. We started off in two thousand seventeen with only sixteen placements. So each year is our, it's our goal to try to grow, that, grow that number of, of possible placements for our young people. I just wanna share a couple of quotes from, uh, one of our E three work sites here. I won't read it aloud, but, um, something to look over, I think it was great. Um, this, these quotes, just because one of the main takeaways that we've found as part of our program is that we really, the employers that we have on board, they really act as that mentor, um, that positive role, adult role model in their life to kind of just help them, you know, give them the little nuggets of knowledge and what it means to be an employee. What it's like to just have a glimpse into the world of work because a lot of our young people, since we are looking at, um, a population of current sophomores, juniors and seniors, a lot of our young people have never held a job before. So this is their kind of dipping their toe into the world of work basically and, and giving them just a glimpse of what it's like to be a good employee.
Okay, I'm back on, thank you. Um, uh, and I apologize in advance, we're, the, thank you for allowing us to zoom this because I'm doing double, triple duty here and I'm, if we, we get interrupted, I'll, I'll mute myself here in a minute. How can you help? So that's always the question here because we are always, every year, Christie and I are pounding the pavement, trying to find employers, people to participate because this is, it's giving back. Again, when, uh, we first started this, it didn't exist. So we had to sell it. And how do you sell something that doesn't exist? You have to kind of sell the vision, of course. And so, uh, we were trying to do that. Del Norte County, as you guys know, is, uh, the, at least in my mind, the most generous county community that I've ever seen and been a part of. I don't care what the, uh, the warts and all say about us, but you know, we're, we are generous. And you see it in our basketball gym with all the banners. You see it at the baseball parks with the, the, uh, back, the outfield fences and whatnot. I saw it this weekend at the track meet that I helped with the pole fall, but they, they have fences with all the little banners of sponsorships. That's us, that's Del Norte County. That's what we do. And this is another way to give back. And that's part of, uh, who we are. We, we wanna help build our own sales force, or now sales force, our workforce. And that's been part of the, the mission for us. So how can people be involved out there? We're looking mostly for folks to help hire someone. We use hire in quotation because you're hiring them for about four to six weeks. And it's, and it's really giving back, um, not in buying a banner, but providing that placement at your place of business or your agency and your organization. So a kid can figure out what it's like on the job and then have some tools leaving that to look, to look for other opportunities. And this slide right here really speaks to the innovative part of what this program has, how, how we developed it and why other counties around the state were going, well, wait a second, what are you, how'd you do this? Well, because an idiot like me is able to ask certain questions and someone like Christie, who is awesome and always says, well, let's see, why can't we do that? She never shuts me down. She always says, well, let, I don't know why we can't do that. And if you have someone like that in your life, you're gonna do great things. And so, some of the things we've done is what if we enticed businesses to get involved by saying, hey, you donate the cost of the hourly wage to the Workforce Center. And so it's a tax deductible or maybe a tax of the, well, donation to the Workforce Center. So as a business, you get to write this off on your taxes as a donation. Then, hey, Christie, what if the Workforce Center became the hiring agent? So a mom and pop shop or a little business or whatever doesn't feel the, the, the pain or whatever it might be of, uh, the payroll costs, uh, workman's comp, uh, all of that stuff that comes with feeling of liability of having a student work at your site. What if the Workforce Center became the hiring agent? So they bore those, uh, burdens and responsibilities. She goes, hey, I, I don't see why we can't do that. So all these things started lining up and that's exactly some of the enticements to get people involved. The Workforce Center becomes a hiring agent. They are, uh, again, taking care of all the workman's comp, all the, uh, the payroll costs and whatnot. The employer donates the cost of the hourly wage for four weeks, about twenty hours a week to the Workforce Center. The employer gets, uh, a benefit in that. And you also get to give back to the community in this sense. Again, not paying for a banner to hang in the gym, but having them impact on a, a kid from Del Norte County who may not know what it's like to be employable. And then again, at the end of four weeks, it ends. And we're not, they're not, you're not looking for your forever employee here necessarily. You are looking to help coach, mentor, as Christie says, and then you know what? We send them on their way. So again, other ways you can be involved is facilitate, uh, be part of that, uh, panel I discussed that are work, our boot camp. And, uh, they really love that, the kids do, because they get to meet you. Again, these are many of the kids of Del Norte County that this is, this is unknown. This is a mystery. The idea of finding a job, looking for a job, getting a job. It's a mystery. So having them get FaceTime with our local community leaders or business leaders, like the folks there in the chamber is immeasurable. And, um, allow E three youth to tour our county departments. This is also part, not only county departments, but businesses, local businesses. We've had, um, our E three youth and our advisors, our adult advisors set up, uh, tours of like Fashion Blacksmith, the Ace Trust Factory, the CHP Office. Um, I think Seaquake also allowed us to tour their facilities, the, the mill up in Brookings. There's just all these opportunities, uh, the city of Crescent City. A lot of people don't realize this, or county of Del Norte. There are so many employment opportunities, um, that span the, the, the spectrum of office work, of being a mechanic, landscaping, all that. Yeah.
Tony, I, I know you could go on and on and on.
I can, I'm sorry.
And on and on and on. That's okay. How about, how about we, uh, you open it up, uh, we open it up for board, uh, questions and comments? And then we'll take, uh, a little bit of time for the public and we'll move on.
Certainly, and I'm done anyways.
Okay. Any questions from board members?
I just wanna comment is that you had me at hello, Tony, so you could have saved everybody about twenty minutes. But, um, I saw this presentation at the Chamber of Commerce and I was very encouraged by it. And it was a little bit more personal for me too, is when I was nineteen years old, I just needed a job. And my aunt said, you know, work for the county. So I was down, down in Sonoma County, had moved down there to go to college. And so I just got a county job at nineteen. I had no idea, didn't care what it was. I just wanted a county job. But from that, I was hired by their probation department down there. From that, it led to a lifelong career. And so these are opportunities that we could perhaps give to people. We can open up doors. We can give them some, um, ideas for interest that could lead to something that is going to be a career path for them. So I'm very highly supportive of this. I don't know how it's going to work on the county end. But I am hoping that it's something that in, in one of the ways, either a placement, a workshop, or allowing them to tour our county departments. I am very encouraged by this and I'd like to support it.
Yeah, it, this, this brings me back to the early days of the chamber, two thousand and five, when Mike Sullivan and I spent a lot of time in Sacramento trying to figure out the logistics that you guys figured out essentially with taking that liability, placing it on the Workforce Center in this case, and really allowing those employers to do what they do best, which is bring our youth to an opportunity and allow them to build that confidence and experience that is necessary. The program has grown over the years and I'm really impressed with what you guys have been able to do with it. I know my children, at least my oldest, has participated in it with the Open Door Clinic and he's on a track to a medical degree. But just really appreciate the opportunities and more importantly, really appreciate the businesses that allow themselves to open up to these young people, give them that opportunity and let them build that confidence. So thanks for keeping this program going, guys.
Thank you.
Sue, you got anything?
I think it's a wonderful opportunity because one of the things in the workforce that we do see is that, um, the workforce is not, does not have work ethics and it's because they're not learning them somewhere. I know that we had by example from our grandparents and our parents in our time. And so, uh, we started working at age eleven. So, uh, and pickin' berries and, and beans and stuff. So we had a very strong work ethic. But, so I really appreciate this program and I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the students to get some good work ethics and, um, allow for them to get a job that, um, is meaningful for them.
Thank you. Yeah, Tony, uh, you, you know, of course I've participated in it. It's a great program. It, it, it works really well. Uh, and can, and I hope you continued success. Keep it going.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Christie.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Tony. Have a good day. Okay, we are going to move on. We're gonna move on to our general government, uh, item number nineteen. Approve and authorize a maximum density bonus of twenty-six percent or four dwelling units for the sixteen hundred North Crest Drive LLC, LLC project and to authorize the chair to sign and record the Affordable Housing Agreement and Declaration of Restrictive Covenants between the county of Del Norte and sixteen hundred North Crest LLC. Heidi?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, the, I guess, the recommendation pretty much summarizes everything. Mr. Flores came to the Planning Commission, um, several years ago, filed for a general plan amendment and rezone to, um, amend the land use and zoning of his property to allow for multifamily development, including some low-income housing. That ultimately was approved by the Board of Supervisors. And, uh, as an oversight, we did not take this action or present it to the board. And this is sort of just fulfilling that obligation. Uh, so if you have any questions about it, I'm available.
Okay, questions from board members?
This chairman, I move we approve and authorize the maximum density bonus and authorize you to sign that and record the Affordable Housing Agreement and Declaration of Restrictive Covenant.
I'd second that. And, um, Heidi, I just wanna quickly ask a question, make comment if necessary. Is there more opportunity like this out there?
I think so. I think you just have to find the right developer and the right property, but this is pretty unique. Um, I mean, it, it was a property that was already developed with some of these little cabins. And Mr. Flores has decided to take that concept and expand it. I mean, I think it's a neat idea and it would be really neat to see it elsewhere. Um, but yeah, I mean, if, if someone had that idea, we would certainly work with them to try to, um, especially using the planned, um, community, which is what he used. It allows, you know, the design, um, you, you should basically to do, design your own setbacks and, and do all those things to make things fit.
Yeah, that's, that's great and definitely would encourage any opportunity that came to the CDD that we explore every opportunity to actually build additional housing. So, yeah, good work. Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Okay, any public comment? And I just have to say, if, uh, anybody can remember back when that, what that place looked like before and what it looks like now, it's a huge improvement. And I think it's gonna benefit the community in long run. Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Maston?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
A point of order. Are we going to do the remainder of the consent agenda items?
Yes, we are. Moving on to item number 20, introduce and read by title only. An ordinance deleting and replacing chapter 7.52 of the Delmar County Code, underground storage hazardous substance. Heidi, you're going to speak to us?
This is a cleanup as part of our evaluation from Cali PA for our Certified Unified Program Agency. The Hazardous Materials Program that is managed by our Environmental Health Division. One of the items that they noticed was that the county code reference to the underground storage tanks was very out of date. And so they have asked us to update it. And the language that is included in your package is. Acceptable to the water board staff who implements it through Cali PA as well as county council who has reviewed it.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the board for the discussion. Kylie, please pull a vote.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, item 21, approve and authorize the Community Development Department staff to prepare an engineering and traffic. Survey for Elk Valley Crossroad from Wonder Stump Road to Highway 101. And direct staff to return to the board for approval as requested by me.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board for the discussion.
I just have a couple of questions. It's all right. What is, I understand the, the action? What is the, what is the outcome that we're looking for here?
The outcome is that we will do a study to determine whether or not the speed needs to be lowered at that area.
Okay.
And then if so, then we would subsequently come back to the board with an, an ordinance amendment to the chapter in our county code that allows us to lower the speeds. Also by establishing what the speed limit is, that's what allows the CHP to be able to ticket individuals.
Okay, what's the speed currently?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, thank you. I'd also like to mention that the timing on this is dependent upon the weather. There are certain weather conditions that have to be in place in order to actually do the study.
That was my other question is, is about how much time to for the study does it take?
Assuming we have good weather conditions, it can be done fairly quickly, but it's just uncertain when those may exist. But certainly we will be looking for that day as soon as possible.
Okay. Oh, is it just a day long thing? Or is it like over a course of?
That's a good question. I don't know how long they collect the data. I'm thinking it is just for one day. I believe at certain times of the day and they.
Okay, and that, and the cost of this is just something that's routine that we do?
Yes, this would be paid for through the road fund because it is related to a county maintained road.
Perfect. That's, those were my questions. So thank you very much.
Any other questions from board members? Kylie, would you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we got some budget transfers.
Mr. Chairman. I move we approve budget transfer 0501 and the amount of $20,000. 0502 and the amount of $9,500 and 0503 and the amount of $557,980.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment on budget transfers?
Thank you again. Just, this might be a good opportunity to reverse course and start making improvements. Allocate these funds to the jails.
Any further public comment? Seeing no further public comment. Kylie, would you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, under legislative and budget issues, item number 25. We're going to send a letter hopefully about the critical habitat of the Endangered Species Act. Heidi, did you want to speak at all to this? Or it's pretty self-explanatory, I think. The letter was very good. The only thing I would ask, can we, can we ask for an extension of time?
I mean, we could, but what would we do with that?
I've just heard that there are some people that heard about this late and still wanted to make some comments.
Well, they, they have until the 23rd to submit comments, I believe is what.
Yeah, that's what it said in there.
I mean, there, there is still time. As far as us delaying it, I mean, there, there are certain information. That they want you to provide to them. They just, it's not a matter of, I just don't like this. If I don't like this, because this is, these are the things that are wrong.
Right.
I mean, if we have those types of things to add to our letter. Then yeah, then in our case, I think, yeah, we would be supportive of an extension, but. Without that, I, I don't know what we would gain. But individuals are also welcome to request an extension.
Right. Okay. But we don't have a need for an extension for what we've put together.
No, we, we have a draft letter and I mean, we can amend it, you know, based on what public comment you receive.
Okay.
It's, all the decisions are up to the five of you.
Okay, thank you. All the decisions? Wow, that's really putting a lot, big load on us. Is there any public comment on this item?
Introducing myself to you guys. My name's Sherman Jackson, lived here for quite a while. Here we go. My name's Sherman Jackson. Lived here since the eighties. Family's been hunting the lake girls since the thirties. The vacilia situation, you know, you know, we're kind of looking at this as another way to shut down or more hunting. When in fact, they did that at the south end of Lake Toluah last year. Notification most people got was. Signs posted on the stumps and stuff. Okay, so I represent the Delmar Waterfellers. We're an organization that just formed because we're really kind of sick and tired of being locked out of everything here. The, the. The opportunity to duck hunt or waterfowl locally has been reduced incrementally. Over the years, a little bit at a time, you know, till nobody noticed they were missing a leg. Kind of a thing. We marked it out. We, we, we can show at least 1,500 acres that have been removed from hunting that have been traditionally. There's probably more than that if I spoke with other people. It just, we need to have something done. And the comment period of the celia, it would appear. That there wasn't a lot of time given to begin with, with this. It's kind of dropped on everybody. You know, as the state does for us. We're kind of a forgotten group up here. And we, and we need a voice. And I know I'm kind of rambling, so. Anyway, we, we kind of appreciate to be able to get a longer. Comment period for that to be able to, to organize things, you know, I noticed. Are the, are the dune stewards represented here? Because this involves them. Okay, then. Just wondering, no comment on that? Well, that's it.
Yeah, and just to, just to point out that this is a federal designation, I think. And we've all, we've all, if I remember right. We've always been watching out for this for statewide, right, Heidi? This is a plant of concern that we have to watch out for.
Mr. Chair? For, for coastal projects, this has been a plant we've all already been having to address as part of development application. So it's not. New for us in that respect.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair? If anyone else is going to speak to this issue, it would be really helpful for me because what Heidi was saying was. If there are things that we did not include in our county letter that you think we should include. You should let us know that now so that we have the ability to add that to the letter.
I seen our ad about tourism on the TV. That's a good ad. And I think that's really important to our community, to the county. And it seems like the county would stand up to the state and all these entities are trying to shut down. The access to the lake. I run into a lot of tourists. I go to the ocean a lot and a lot of them love the ocean. They're agate hunting, fishing for perch. Whatever, just enjoying the beauty of it. And we'll lose these if the access is cut off. And I think it's. We've got a lot going in Delmar County. You, you guys need to stand up to it.
Thank you. More public comment?
Good morning. My name's Jeff Reed. I live at 300 Kelly Road here in Crescent City. I've lived in this county for over 40 years now. I've either hiked or paddled thousands of miles on the Lake Girl Wildlife Area, Toluah Dune State Park, the former Lake Girl Project and other public lands. Regarding the proposal by the Fish and Wildlife Service on the dune plant, and I'll just stick with that name because it, it speaks to me more than probably the proper name for it. There were a few failures, in my opinion, on this proposal. The Fish and Wildlife Service failed to adequately inform the public. This, this event started back in 2014, if not sooner. And the Fish and Wildlife Service came out with a public notice in the time standard back in March. I know we all read that paper every day because we live in Del Norte County. No one that, to my knowledge, that owns private property out there that will be affected was notified of this in an individual manner. I've talked to three property owners in the last three days and none of them were very happy to not have been informed about this. There are. Two hundred and some odd parcels out there that will be affected by this. Thirty percent of those are private property. The rest, not unexpectedly, belong to the state. A few belong to the county and a few possibly belong to the local tribe. It's unfortunate that a better communication wasn't made to make the public aware of this event. And I think that's part of the concern. About requesting an extension. I was at the Del Norte Fishing Game Advisory Commission meeting last night with a few other folks. And that was their biggest concern was the document really doesn't in their mind. Identify the true case in this matter. And there, there was some. That group really wanted to have more time to ask specific questions of Fish and Wildlife Service to get some specific answers on. Things that they think were omitted or overlooked in that document. I'm not here to speak for them. That's, that's not my task. And in my mind, it's not clear that there is sufficient information in that document that this plant ever existed in great quantity out there. I didn't read it in there. I'm not a biologist, but that's, that's my impression. Additionally, the maps that were provided of the four areas in this county that will be. Critical habitat designations are very lacking in exactly where they are. There's no overlay on any sort of a real public map. I requested one for at least the two areas out of Pacific shores. And I took that map and overlated on a Google Earth document to find out how many parcels were involved and where these things really are. But there was no clarity on where the state ownership boundaries are out there. And that's, that's just another issue.
Jeff, you need to, you need to wrap it up here.
Sure, I'll wrap it up and just say that I am, I'm pleased that the letter that the county drafted. In response to this, but, but it doesn't truly. Express the fact of the poor job the Fish and Wildlife Service has done. And this is a disservice to this county, what they're doing and their approach and process to it. And that is the frustration you hear from all of us. We can't, we can't stop this. But it's just the beginning of the loss of access and recreation out there. We all know it. We've all lived here and seen it.
Yep, we all.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you for your comments. And as Heidi said, you, you can ask for an extension if you have relevant. Issues. And so hopefully they would. Take, take care of them. Is there any other public comment on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd just like to revisit this with Ms. Kunkstall. So I could fully understand. What folks are expressing as the concerns that we're writing about with this critical habitat designation. Again, if you could quickly bullet. Those items of concern that we'd be expressing to the US Fish and Wildlife Service. What, what are they? What are we? What are we concerned about with this critical habitat listing?
We are concerned how it would affect the breach of the lake, which was discussed. We are concerned about how it affects our county maintained roads and our ability to continue to maintain them. Public access. That's something we're all concerned about. So those would be the primary items. You know, one suggestion would be that we start off our letter by requesting the extension on behalf of the citizens of our community. But in the meantime, we're providing these, the Board of Supervisors is providing these comments to you, which is kind of. A combination hybrid.
Yep. Yeah, that was what I was hoping we could do.
Yeah, yeah, we can modify the opening paragraph. To, to make that request, but still say.
Yeah.
You know, basically complete the county's action in submitting the comments.
Perfect.
Yeah, and I appreciate you explaining that. Many people are trying to figure out probably why we're getting involved in something like this. And it's really. From, from our functionality standpoint, being able to do the breach pieces, potentially even road maintenance to access the breach sites.
Exactly. And you know, those locations are within the, an area of deferred certification under our local coastal program. So. All of our activities are highly monitored in that area already. And so, you know, obviously adding one more layer to it, we want to make sure that we can protect what limited. You know.
Yeah.
Rights we have now.
And I know you brought this up in relationship to the snowy plover, which is also a critical species, which is also for the critical habitat designation within the same. Area. However, that's a fairly seasonal impact to us. Potentially, this would not be seasonal. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. I mean, obviously our activity at the breach site is seasonal. I mean, I, I can see just as in the consultation that we have with the US Fish and Wildlife Service as part of our Department of Army. Where permit where we get a condition that, you know, requires, you know, the, to observe the site. Prior to going out there to make sure that we avoid any of the nests for the snowy plover, et cetera. That the same type of condition would be included within our breach permit. Likely we would have to mobilize at a different location. Though we're adaptable, we can do that. It's, it's workable.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I think. So I think the most important thing from hearing from the, the comments from the public were the access. And I think in our letter clearly states the importance of the public access. And the maintenance and preservation of that access. And so I think that's important for. The public to hear that that was one of our stronger points within the letter.
Linda?
Hi there. So. I tried to look up information on this plant and how come it's so important and there's very little information out there. And I like for, if the fishing game want to. Protect this plant, they need to educate why we must, why it's needed. Plants and species go extinct all the time. And sometimes maybe it's played its use out. Thank you.
Sorry, Jeff, you had your opportunity to speak. I'm not gonna. Any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve and second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments from board members? Kylie, would you pull a vote?
Just to clarify, just a clarification, I'm sorry, before we vote, the letter will include asking for the extension based on the comment. Okay, thank you.
That answered my question. Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we're going to go back to the consent agenda, item number twelve.
And they're just quick. I just couldn't find the answer. So for twelve is I'm assuming, but I don't know because it wasn't very clear that this increase is due to some kind of increase in number served. And I just wanted that clarification.
I think it was all in the amendment.
Information according to Chris Starett's foot, they had an additional unplanned placement in this facility, which
Supervisor Short, can you speak? Could you turn your mic up? When you speak, it's really hard to hear.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, thank you. But yeah, there's an unplanned placement in this facility that dictated that they need the additional funds.
So with that, I would make a motion to approve.
In a second.
A motion and a second, public comment?
Thank you again. I was just wondering if we could explain the original agreement has a false date of January eleven, twenty twenty one, should be twenty twenty two, if that could be corrected, and just wondering if you could help me understand why the agreement started in July one of twenty twenty one. But it wasn't approved by this board until January of twenty twenty two, when the contract was already half expired. I was wondering if we've had any members or people in taking use of that service during the first three or six months of the contract? And it just seems odd that if we're only getting four months of the service and they're already ten percent over budget, seems like a good reason not to approve it and save twenty thousand dollars.
Any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, then we'll close public comment for that for this item. I don't see a date that's wrong. This is an amendment to a previous agreement that was in place. I'm not going to get back and forth with you. Is anybody wants to speak to any of the comments that he's made that knows anything? I know that we retroactively approve ongoing agreements from time to time. And I don't know if this is exactly one or not, but or whether it was amended at that time, and that's what the original agreement. Joe, do you know anything about it at all?
I don't know the history of this particular contract, but what often happens is we'll place people because it's basically an emergency. We'll do it with purchase orders until it gets to a certain amount, and then we'll do a contract to cover retroactively. It's not ideal, but it's common throughout the states. The speed of things and the speed of government don't always line up.
True. Any other questions from board members? Kylie, would you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Item number fourteen.
Yes, and this has the same concern for me and I I pulled it because of the agreement being July first through twenty twenty one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. And so as the previous one, this one also struck me as I just assumed the other one was because there was an augmented, and so that meant that the money was for that additional. This one, I'm not sure why we are just approving it now with those dates. Because now we only have a month left for this contract.
Yeah, again, I don't know really the details of this specific situation, but what it probably means is we've been using this facility all year. Sometimes negotiating back and forth, sometimes with purchase orders, and it just hasn't gotten to a contract yet. So this is basically ratifying the relationship that has existed already. It kind of covers us in case in case a dispute arises out of something that's already happened. We're all agreeing that these are the terms that apply retroactively.
I do have a response from Chris Starett's foot on this one as well. Pre email reads, unfortunately, it takes a really long time to get contracts returned from this facility, not due to a lack of trying or consistent follow up. And there there's a typo here. The state required language changes this year. This contract has been with the vendor for quite some time. We have had a conserved client in this facility for several years. We have been unable to pay so far this fiscal year due to for their care due to this contract not being in place. We will pay for the monthly fees from July forward as soon as the agreement is signed.
So understanding this, I hope that we've already begun to negotiate for the contract or get the contract through the process because we're going to be approving it soon because this is only through June thirtieth. So I would just like for these ones in particular that have we've just approved that have these dates so out of compliance that we make sure that the the next one we are approving is more timely. And so just to ensure that that has already that process has already begun.
We we can't ensure that. This has been going ongoing for a long time. This is the way it happens. This is the way it goes, and then we retroactively go back and and fix it when it needs to be, like county council said, this is the kind of stuff comes up and if you would just call, yeah.
I did like I would like to mention that Chris Starett's foot, she is online. She's the interim director of Health and Human Services. So if you guys have more directed questions to her, I'm sure she can answer some.
So just because a practice has been what we've done in the past doesn't make it acceptable. And so I'm I am new to the process. I agree, but I would hope that we would work to be better at timely contract development and.
As it was stated, this takes two people, two sides. Both people have to agree to have it done at a certain time. So if it doesn't happen on one end, it's not going to happen on the other end.
And I assure you that the fiscal department, they worked diligently to get these contracts signed. It was in the at the facility and we weren't able to get it back to them and or back to us in a timely manner.
I appreciate that. Thanks for interjecting.
So I'd be looking for a motion.
I'll motion to approve item fourteen.
One second.
A motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then bring it back to the board for the discussion. Kylie, please pull a vote.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Item number fifteen.
I will read some answers, so I'm glad you're online. So I just had questions regarding this. It's the same with our dates for the approval, and I understand that there were some state mandated kinds of things that we needed to to do, but also I had questions regarding page seventeen through twenty five where there the performance measures and all of ours are zeros. And I was just wondering if you could kind of go over that and let me know why that is or what's going on. So it's with each of the performance measures.
I appreciate this, and I don't have that information right now, but I can get that to you. This is on the other side of the house, which I've looked at, but I don't have that complete packet in front of me, so I apologize.
Okay, well, I appreciate that because I would, these are important as they deal with foster care and disabilities and the the care of those children and most vulnerable in our care. And so that's the reason why I'd like to be able to see the performance measures, but thank you so much.
Motion?
I will motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign the Children's Medical Service Plan with the Department of Healthcare Services, which includes the child health and disability prevention certification, children's California Children's Services Certification and Healthcare Program for Children and Foster Care Certification. And that this plan reconciles the previous fiscal years and effective July first, twenty twenty one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, as requested by the interim director of Health and Human Services.
And I'll second that one.
Okay, motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then bring it back to the board for the discussion.
I just want to clarify that that what we're doing here is we're just certifying the results. The fact that the results don't show favorably isn't really what's at question here. I do appreciate the the wanting to know more information about that. So I just want to say that we're just certifying these results. We don't have to like them.
We don't have to like them. We often don't like them, but it is what it is. Kylie, would you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay. With that, any other legislative and budget issues, Neil, you're aware of, board members? Kylie, did we hit everything?
Yes, we did.
Right on.
Yes. I I I know we're all getting hit pretty hard on Senate Bill thirteen thirty eight. And this is the legislation that the governor's co-signed on to that we heard directly from him at CSAC this year, specific to mental illness, behavioral health, and basically shifting responsibility to the counties. I think it might be time and best placed on our next agenda if we could have a little bit more discussion on this. I know RCRC and CSAC are both encouraging us to get involved at a stronger level of language to the Senate committees before some of the more penalizing pieces of sanctions come down through the pipeline, so.
Okay, we probably should have Ted Ward here speak to it.
No, thirteen thirty eight.
I thought you meant thirteen thirteen eighty three.
No, no, sorry.
And then, since we're asking for things that perhaps could be on future agendas, is if we could bring back the proposal that perhaps we do participate in the E three program. I didn't say it right after the presentation, but I was hoping that that's something that we could have back on the next agenda.
And you're going to work up some sort of board report on why?
Absolutely, I can take that on for sure. Thank you.
Anything else from board members? Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Next meeting is May twenty fourth.